Mayor, recording has begun.
Um, it's the eighth full council chamber here. I would like to officially call this meeting of May 21st, 2024 to order. Madam Clerk, could you please give a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Winkler.
President.
Councilman Trolinger.
President.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
President.
Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
Mayor James, you have a quorum.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. And I would ask that if you would all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, if you have had a moment to look at the meeting agenda, I will entertain a motion to accept it.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we adopt the May 21st, 2024 meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Before I officially call this public hearing to order, I want to give you all an opportunity, this last opportunity, and I'll take a moment here to sign up if you want to speak, if you think you want to speak, because once I officially start it, we can't add. So if anybody not signed up would like to speak or even contemplating. All right. We took the list before the, like, the drumroll.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, um, I would like to ask the town clerk to review the procedures for tonight's hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please review the procedures for this evening's public hearing?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The Town of LaPlata hearings are conducted in the following manner: called to order, review of public notices, summary of town staff report and recommendations, questions by the town council and town staff, written documents entered into the record, speakers from the public, additional questions by the town council, closing of the public hearing. Written documents for the record submitted in advance to the public hearing are provided to the to the presiding officer prior to the opening of the public hearing. At the appropriate time, the presiding officer will call registered speakers to the podium. Speakers who have registered to speak in advance via the town webpage will be recognized prior to the speakers who registered upon arrival at the public hearing. At the discretion of the presiding officer, speakers' comments may be limited to three minutes and may not be yielded to another person. A sign-in sheet was provided at the entry of the council chambers for any public hearing attendees to register to speak if they have not already done so in advance via the town's webpage. Registration to speak will end when the first public hearing is opened.
Thank you very much. I would now like to officially open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2025 financial plan budget at 6:03 PM. Madam Clerk, has the notice of public hearing been properly advertised?
Yes, for the record, this public hearing was advertised in the Southern Maryland newspaper in the May 10th, 2024 issue. A copy of the advertisement is attached to the meeting agenda. Notice of this public hearing was also advertised on the town's webpage.
Thank you. Will the town manager and town treasurer please provide recommendations on behalf of the staff regarding the FY25 financial plan and budget? Come on down.
I have provided a memo outlining some of my concerns with future fiscal concerns that affect the current budget. Some of those are the significant increases in our operating expenses over the last three years, concerns of investment revenues being relied on for covering expense, operating expense revenue or expense. Part of that is the significant operating revenues. In the last FY23, we had over $1 million in investment revenues. And FY24, I'm estimating we are going to have again over $1 million in investment revenues. And in this FY25 budget, I have $488,000 budgeted for investment revenues. But that is something that we typically have not seen. And it's a concern that when we start purchasing our capital needs, we're not going to have those funds to have this investment revenue. And the rate that we're earning is going to significantly decrease. Talking about capital needs, we have a capital improvement chart that outlines five years of capital improvements and capital assets in that they're totaling around $22 million, yet we have $11 million in the unassigned fund balance. Another concern is our rainy day fund is underfunded. We should have at least two months of funding based on our operating expenses. And right now, we have 1.6 million and it should be 2.4 million. Also, the population growth, we had a pay point study done. The projection in that was 17.2% increase, but our rate is in actuality over the last three years, 4.5%. And of course, the operating costs. We did talk with all departments to try to reduce some of our ongoing operating costs. But again, they need those costs to cover the current services they're providing. So we did reduce the COLA from 3.79% to 3%. And again, my biggest concern is the increasing in personnel cost over the last three years compared to the previous three years, where we've had a 6.7 point or 67.4% increase in personnel cost over the last three years, including this FY25 budget compared to 845,000 or 19.4% over the previous three years from 2020 to 2022. In light of this, the finance department is recommending to consider a contribution benefit instead of a defined benefit, which is also in line with what Human Resources has recommended. This will better position us to manage the operating costs and stabilize expenses and avoid fiscal uncertainties and unpredictable pension payouts. This morning, I did do an analysis on the information that was provided by Bolton and looked at how long with the 500,000 and the 6% of those qualified positions, how long that would last. And I found that in 2032, we would start having the balance start in a decreasing trend. And by 2038, 2040, we'd actually need to reevaluate how much we're withholding because we would have a deficit. It also, so in that light, we may need to increase taxes in the future or cut employee benefits or adjust them or reduce services or also not include benefits like health insurance and retirement that would help support employees that retire early.
All right. Mr. Manuel?
The only thing I would like to add, Mayor James, is we took the input from council and what we have provided is a balanced budget. It has been, of course, published for a public hearing and that's where we are right now. So, um, that's all I have on that.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, I will open the floor for any questions for our treasurer or our town manager.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Larson, for your report. And your, those projections are for 2032. Okay. And so you note that we have had an increase in operating costs for the past three years, and those costs are continuing to go up. You make the recommendation that we be physically good stewards. You've never said to me, where will, where do you plan to get the money? If you're saying that we're continuing to have an increase in cost, but you've never made a recommendation for how we remedy that. The addition, the other thing that I have to ask is, when we talk about a balanced budget, we don't have a balanced budget. I think we have to stop saying that it's misleading. We have a budget that's been balanced using unassigned funds in every, every fund. So it was not a balanced budget. Our expenses continue to exceed our revenue. And so I don't understand the pushback for, especially in the general fund. We own, the only revenue there is taxes. In the enterprise fund, we have rates. And so we can increase those, and those were increased without any pushback. And at your discretion, you use unassigned fund balance to balance the enterprise fund. But there was no recommendation on how you would balance the general fund, considering you only wanted to use a certain amount of the revenue from the unassigned fund. So the only option given was increase the taxes, and you gave examples of percentages. If we're continuing to see our cost increase, and I can imagine so after COVID, everybody's experiencing it, what would have been the recommendation to remedy those if you're projecting that we're going to run out of fund balance? And fund balance for everybody that is not sure about what that is, that's a savings account. It's best business practice. You have money set aside to cover operating loss when you don't have the revenue to make it up. There's nothing wrong with us having a fund balance. And I think everybody who has is, that works. You're not going to let your employer tell you, I'm not going to give you a raise because I know you have a significant savings account. That's just not good business. So my question again, if you note that we're going to lose money in all of these areas on a continuous basis, how do you propose we remedy that? I don't think the, the defined benefit plan for the police officer. And please understand, we did not raise taxes for a benefit plan. This is not new to us. We have been talking about this for seven years, three years since I've been on the council. And we knew that we were working towards identifying a plan that would, is not like the rest of the staff because they're getting a benefit plan that mirrors what their colleagues across the state have. It's not unheard of that our police officers have a different opinion. The sheriff's department has it. Pretty, pretty much every police department across the state of Maryland has it. So it's not unheard of, and it's not a sweetheart deal for the police. When we increased wages for all of the staff in 2022 due to the PayPal study, it's not PayPal, whatever it's called. You talked about that, but you didn't give us a recommendation on where the revenue would come because we made that proposal, we put it in place. How do we plan to fund that if we do not increase taxes and that money comes out of general fund as well? So those are my questions, those are my observations, and I would really love to hear what your thoughts were.
As far as revenue, your real option is real property tax. What we might want to, what we should be focusing on is the one expense that we control, which is personnel costs. That has increased significantly, and yes, it is partly because of that pay point study. But it's something that was decided, and I'm, I don't know if you guys received a forecast on what's going to happen if that, if that was implemented. And that's why I'm providing this forecast to let you know this is some of the things that are going to happen. And we either find areas to cut or where we have the most control, which is personnel costs. And I don't recommend cutting benefits, but again, you're providing a benefit that council feels is a need to provide, but we do have to pay for it somehow. I'm just concerned is if, this is not going to be the last tax increase to support the cost, the personnel cost that's going to occur in future years.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Thank you. Again, thanks for the information. I just, I guess, had a question, a couple of questions. Under your paragraph that, that talks about population growth projection. So I'm trying to remember, what was the year of the, the pay point study? Was that 22F?
Well, it was based on 22, but it started in 21.
Okay. And so any projection is, that's what it is. So projections change, particularly population and growth. So my, and this is probably a double-edged sword. And from my perspective, there, this again seems to me to be a false narrative that somehow we're going to fund our budget by building more rooftops. Okay? That's not my, that's, I don't fully believe that. Because I've seen numerous studies in Maryland and across the country that says residential development doesn't pay for itself unless they're different, mixed uses or different development scenarios. But when you sprawl, they don't pay for themselves. So I have a little concern about this continuing reliance or statement that we're, that we need growth to fuel our budgets. Wait a minute, I have two more points to make, please. So, and the other related issue to that is, yeah, it brings revenue, but in the, in the mid to long term, that's going to cost future taxpayers more money because we have to maintain those facilities that we take over. Joe Developer builds it, they pay for it, and then they turn it over to us. And so guess what? The taxpayers own it, and then we have to maintain it. So I've, I've asked the question, I'm not sure I got a clear answer, but be that as it may. The issue is then, do we know what it costs to maintain one lane mile of road? Do we know what it costs us to maintain a learning foot of water and sewer? And oh, by the way, we have the huge expenses of stormwater management. So I'm just relating that. And then the second issue is, and this is again a mid to long-term issue. We're not going to fix that tonight or next year's budget. The other related issue is, we somehow need to diversify our tax base. Because I, I would, I would, I don't, I tried to get the information, I haven't found it. What is our ratio of residential to commercial development? Okay, I would make a swag, I would make a wild guess. It's probably pretty low. And so that's not the cure-all, but it does lower our reliance on property taxes. So again, for mid and long term, that's something I believe that the town should really focus on in the future. But again, this, this continuing false narrative about, well, we need to build houses to fund budgets. Well, and there are a lot of folks who, who talk, talk to me and say they don't want all the growth. So there's, it's like, that's why I refer to it as a being, it's a double-edged sword. But that really concerns me that we state this, and that implies, well, then we want to build all the houses we can build. Well, there's, there's a lot of nuance to that other than just saying that statement. So I would hope in the future that we take more time to really have a little bit more nuanced discussion and educated discussion about that kind of an issue. Thanks.
All right. Could I respond?
Yeah, oh, please do.
Thank you. So actually, I put that in there because one of the portions of the pay point study is saying this growth needs, and we need this personnel to support this growth. And my point is that with the pay point study, they said we're going to have this growth, and this is how many we need, but we're not at that growth. So we don't need this many personnel to sustain based on that study. That was the whole reason for that.
That's a fair statement.
Also, I have been trying to figure out what percentage is commercial and what percentage is for residential. And unfortunately, between the state and the county, they have not been able to give me an answer.
Then I don't feel so bad because I tried to, and I couldn't. Not that you're the expert, I'm, I tried to research that, and it's. And just, just, just one final response is, I mean, I, you're right, the study was linked to what staff we would need in the near future in, in mid and long term, and that's an appropriate thing. But, but I also believe that we've paid catch-up for a lot of years. Okay, and we're still doing that. Despite lack or, despite a lack of anticipated growth, it's still pretty high. 4% is a heck of a lot. 17% is like, that can never be sustained, but, okay.
Also, I wanted to make another point you brought up with revenue. So I did also look at our revenue percentage comparatively, how that growth on real property tax. And it's actually lower than what our growth as units, residential units. So our revenue growth is actually 4.2% compared to our actual development growth at 4.5%.
All right. Questions? Councilman Winkler, Councilman Trolinger, or comments?
Say that again.
Regarding. Okay, so yes. So our development growth. 4.2.
So. What is your recommend, and also, you, if this is your house, how are you, because you're telling us that there's an, there's going to be a deficit when, one way or another, in eight years, correct?
With the pension to ensure, and that, when I did the analysis, I looked at, okay, these are the employees, they are eligible at this age with this many of years, and I'm going to assume that they're going to take their benefits at the time that they're fully eligible for the benefits. And then I looked at, okay, this is how much we're going to pay out. This is how much we started with, this is how much we're bringing in with a 5% rate of return. And over the years, I looked at the employees that would qualify, and as we pay that out, then subtract out when Maryland State takes up to offset that payout. But it's a higher percentage because Maryland State, depending on which plan they are in, is either 1.8 or 1.5%. And the police officers are 2.25%, and Public Works is 1.8%. And as I did the math going through, we would end up in, our balance and the account would start declining in 2032. But that's if you guys implemented this pension. If you did a 457 contribution and say you did 6% to the employees, once that contribution is made, we have no further obligation. That means we don't have to make sure, we have to fill those benefits. They get to use that 457 to subsidize their retirement between collecting their Maryland State retirement and Social Security.
In your experience, how many municipalities are still, are expanding a defined benefit versus leaning towards a defined comp?
So I think that's more of a question for HR because she has done research in that area.
Okay.
Typically, what you see in the, in the public sector space is there is the one pension that is something like a Maryland. And then any other retirement benefits are comprised of contribution plans. But that is pretty typical, even in the private sector as well.
I think it echoes, and I guess my, my point, I think it echoes what is seen in the private sector as well, is that more and more pensions, while I think are a necessary and, and much needed plan, you cannot rely entirely on them. And it's finding a balance between a defined contribution and a defined benefit. And, and if what you're saying is that this is the beginning, you know, there's a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth over funding this supplemental pension versus not funding it, balanced budget versus not balancing it or balancing it on the, on the hike of a tax increase. And you're saying that this is just the beginning of a conversation that we're going to have to have in, or someone's going to have to have in approximately eight years. And in 2048, I think you said, which is only 20 years, 24 years away, 20, 2038, excuse me, is. It's going to bring you closer. Yep, it's going to increase, it's going to increase. So, okay.
To clarify those projections, that is presuming that all current employees stay and they do vest at the appropriate timeline.
Correct.
Because if in the plan that has been proposed, if they left, they would not be able to vest, they wouldn't be able to.
If they left before 10 years.
For 10 years. Okay.
Yes, that is assuming everybody's going to take advantage of the plan. Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that point. I'm going to reserve a couple of my questions until later on in the agenda. Thanks.
Thank you for your recommendation. And it is a very, I mean, tough decision when we do budgets every year. And then when we are proposing to raise taxes, it's time. It's, it's a large concern for all of us. I will, I will reserve my comments for a little bit later because I don't have any questions yet, but I, sure, I will. So moving on to the next, Madam Clerk, do we have, have you received any additional written statements to be included in the record?
Madam Mayor, seven items have been received and are attached to the agenda. These items have been included in the public record.
Okay. And I trust that council has been so diligent in doing the research that we have all looked at that. And I know some have been trickling in and they're not official, officially to the record, but I hope that we have all been able to see that as well. We will now proceed to public comment. I have a list of speakers tonight, and when I call your name, if you would please step up, for the record, state your name, whether you live within the incorporated town limits. And if you could limit your comments to three minutes, I would greatly appreciate it. So first on the list is Ms. Harrington.
Good evening, Counsel. For the record, my name is Janine Harrington, and I am not a resident of the Town of LaPlata, but I am an employee. And tonight, I'm not necessarily speaking on behalf of myself, but on behalf of my employees and the people that I work with. I believe that it's very prudent to develop a successful budget, and you have to start by defining your wants and needs. What do we absolutely need to exist versus what do we want? Because on some levels, a want is a bright shiny object that we're being drawn towards, but we need to thoroughly weigh the pros and cons of that action. Before we can compare and contrast the pros and cons of moving forward and taking the leap, there's some due diligence involved that I don't think that we have fully comprehended. In the current situation, the proposed budget that includes a new pension plan and new tax increase, the citizens and employees of LaPlata should be crystal clear on the following points. As of today, how many current employees would be eligible for the proposed pension plan? How many within the next two years? Specifically, who are these employees? And what positions do they hold in our town government? Have you determined how many eligible employees plan to leave if the new pension plan is not approved? Are the town's needs, these, within these departments, served aligned with our wants for a new pension plan? Could the proposed tax increase be used to fund actual needs? Why is, why isn't the proposed pension plan applicable to all town employees instead of just a few select departments? Could it cause employees not included in the new proposed pension plan to feel that they could get better jobs in other towns or other private companies? Have you asked them? If you didn't ask them, why not? Can each of our town council members honestly state that the citizens have all the facts needed to stand behind an affirmative vote tonight? Have you fulfilled your obligation to be transparent and forthcoming about all the facts our citizens need to make an informed decision? If not, you must be, you must table the vote until more research is done and all the facts are fully disclosed. You need to be able to honestly look the citizens and employees in the eye and tell them why you believe this budget with a tax increase and a new pension plan is a want or a need, and be able to back it up with facts, facts that as of now seem to be missing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Austin Corbin.
Good evening. I'm Austin Corbin. Work for Public Works. I'm not a town resident. I just want to say that I'm opposed to this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Marie Roberts.
Hi, my name is Marie Roberts. I am not a town resident. I am a town employee. I am opposed to all this. I think we should make everything fair for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms., I think it's Ms. Rhodes. I'm sorry, it's cursive writing and it's beautiful, but I want to make sure that we've got it.
Good evening, Counsel. My name is Renata Rhodes. I am a resident of the Town of LaPlata, as well as a business owner. I also work in a government. work in a government agency. I work in finance and budget. And one of the many things that's difficult as a budget person is that everyone has their list of things they want and need. The unfortunate news I have to bear often is that we have to have a fifteen percent cut somewhere, or we have to have an over the, over the, across the board, a twenty percent reduction. And that's when my budget coordinators have to go line by line with each of their, their shareholders and say, okay, we've gotta cut this by this percentage, and we've gotta make the budget where we can live and all can have their benefits and their needs. There are things like implementing existing technology to streamline and make things more efficient, cutting contractors' costs, reducing travel. There are things that can be done, and I've come to these meetings, and I've been hearing that we go to those different departments and we don't hear any feedback on cuts. I do believe that La Plata is growing, but I think that some of the growth has to be also taken on with those who will be the new residents here, and that they should also pitch in, and that we shouldn't have to apply over the, the increase in taxes. So I am opposed to the increase in taxes, and I think we should go back and evaluate the budget line by line if necessary to see where there is fat and cut that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Dallas are the only ones that I have signed up, that have signed up here? Anybody else? All right. Does the town council have any other questions for the town manager or town treasurer? Do you wanna go first? Do you have? This is your.
I think everybody kinda knows where I stand and where, and I think that the frustrations are echoed by not only the council, not only the staff, but the residents and the business owners, and we've seen a, a number of letters and, and I've received a number of phone calls. And, and I'll, I'll fall back on my personal belief that there is a way to do things, and I'm not saying that my way is the right way, I'm just saying there's a way to do things and there's a way not to do things. And I think when what we are attempting to do is valid, I, I had a long conversation with some members of the La Plata Police Department and said, you know, you should be on par with the, the surrounding agencies if, in order to be competitive for, for hiring and for retention. And I don't know why, I'm, I'm new at this game, and I don't know why that it's taken, like, as, as Councilman Bryant Ward pointed out, this has been seven years. And it, you know, there's never a good time, I think, for a tax increase, but it could not come at probably a worse time than, than now, but I don't think that making a rash decision, or to some extent, an ill-advised decision is the right way. Our hearts might be in the, in the best place in, in wanting to do, to, to solve this issue or to, to move forward with this issue, but I don't think compounding it is the way to go. And that's just kinda my, my personal take on it, is that I think that if we really put our heads together, as Ms. Rhodes illustrated, that if we really put our heads together and we really sat down, where, where there's a will, there's a way, and, and I don't think that this is the way. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been dealing with this issue since 2021, when I took office. Police officers came, they asked a question, talked to the former treasurer, and he gave us options. The one thing the police officers were initially asking for was LEOPS. I said, absolutely not, we cannot afford LEOPS. That's what most officers around the state had. The police officers did the work. They came to us, they went out, they did their due diligence, they got additional information. The former treasurer asked, said that there was a way to get this done, but it was not with LEOPS, and he gave several recommendations and proposals. The police officers continue to do their due diligence. I've not heard from any other department head. We've been talking about this since 2021. December, we had a discussion about this enhanced pension plan. We asked the director of HR and the treasurer to meet with Bolton to do a study. They worked with him to do the study. None of the recommendations that they're bringing forward now came out of the discussion with Bolton. I can, if they did, it was not shared with us, the defined contribution plan, none of that was discussed. They sat at the table with Bolton with three recommendations, and we took those recommendations. We asked questions about them, and we came back with, this is not something that we thought of overnight. This has been long and hard coming, and they put in the work. They didn't ask us to do the work. They put in the work, they brought the information forward. This is not a sweetheart deal, this is not, if, if we were told before that the plan that we have is a good plan, I don't understand why it's not a good plan now. They are asking for a plan that mirrors what their colleagues across the state have. Maybe we don't think that they're special, whatever, is, that's not the point, it's not personal, it is the reality. The police officers around the state, their colleagues up the road, have a plan that allows them to retire in twenty-five years with fifty percent, whatever the, the details were. That's what we asked them to do, that's what they did. In December, we talked about it, in January, we talked about it, with all department heads, the budget. We said that we would bring this forward, we asked departments to cut, and it is not true that our departments have not cut. They've been cutting for three years. Every year is the same thing. Director Stahl comes and he says, I've already done my homework, I've looked into this, and this is the best we can do, I'm not asking for this, I'm not asking for that. But repeatedly since 2019, we see the cost go up. Cost of construction, cost of supplies, a garbage truck almost doubled in price from the first time they put it in, in 2018, to the time we finally got it in 2021. Garbage cans increased, everything is increased. We've, we've not had a tax increase in twenty years, twenty twenty-one years. We've had two thousand homes to come forward, and they have not shared in the cost of operating this town. So this was not a fly-by-night decision, this is not a partiality decision. When we were having staff to leave, we did something, we increased, we brought them to marketed rates. We increased the salaries for the staff that was in existence. The police have been asking for this, and we were kicking it down the road. It was gonna be kicked down the road again, let's look at it mid-year. That's not the answer. They have done the work and asked for this, and they brought it before us. The startup costs are not gonna be the cost going forward, they will be less than half. So I don't want anyone to think that it's a fairness that we don't value any of our employees over the other thing. That's just not true. No other department head came and fought as hard. They had the opportunity to come and say, well, if you're gonna do this for the police, if it's being considered, maybe we should add this in. We had the opportunity to bring this forward before now. And so it, it is not that we didn't think about it, it's not that I'm not concerned about our residents, our seniors. I live in the town and I have businesses in the town as well, so it's not gonna just affect, it's not like I'm making a decision that won't impact me as well, it will.
All right. Go ahead.
Thank you, I, I, so, so I, to be very blunt, I mean, I'm very conflicted by this, by the whole process, to be very sensitive about it. And, and this is not the shift lane for, for me, because we have to make a decision, but we just seem to be in the town as long as I've lived here. We seem to be in this cycle where we somehow think the status quo works. Well, it doesn't. I mean, it's painfully obvious to me that people change, circumstances change, the economy changes up and down, whatever, and the town has changed significantly in the years that I've lived here. And so we seem to be in this cycle where we wanna, well, let's, let's just delay and delay and delay. Let's, let's, let's literally don't rock the boat. And then now, from my perspective, we're at a confluence where we've had COVID, we've had a lousy economy that is getting better, not fully better. We've had all this development, which a lot of folks don't like, but yet the town still has to provide these services that you expect and I expect, because I'm a resident too. And this also affects me, and I'm also on fixed income. So, so I just, I'm just very conflicted and concerned that we just seem to be in this cycle where we just wanna put things off forever. And from my perspective, again, the only thing we're doing is that we're making it worse. Because the longer the wait, the bigger bill it's going to be in the immediate and, and, and near, in, in future years. So, and, and I agree with the previous speaker about doing due diligence, absolutely correct. But I think from my perspective, we do a terrible, I'm speaking for me, we do a terrible job of telling you what the budget is. Okay, we issue a public hearing notice. Great, we have a public hearing, great. But, and you may not like this, but go to Charles County and see what they do throughout their budget process. Okay, they have newsletters, they have infographics, and oh, by the way, they have videos where you can go and, and you can learn how the budget is prepared, what, what are the, how do they gain revenues, what do they spend it on, and then they talk about the budget that, that's approved. We don't do that. And so shame on us for not doing this, because there's plenty of examples where we could do much, much better job of informing you of what really is the budget. Because again, there's this, not anybody's fault, but there's been a lot of comments, and that's appreciated, but they say, well, that they confuse operating versus enterprise funds, two separate and complete entities. Okay, the enterprise fund, and you're gonna hear about that tonight more, they are user fees that you and I pay to, to have these services. You turn on the faucet and you pay for the water you use. You use the commodity and you pay for that. You pay for the pickup, for the trash and recycling. And oh, by the way, we have a lot more requirements because of stormwater management. So again, I'm just using that as an example that we, we need to do a much better job of telling you what is the budget, what, what's in it, how do we prepare it, what are revenue sources, and what are we spending on? Thank you.
All right. Do you like to comment?
I, I just have a question, um, thought, doing some questions here, so, Mr. Manuel, if it goes forward tonight as proposed, there's still the work and the effort of building the plan correctly. This is, we've got a skeletal outline essentially.
Correct.
If you could advise us, counsel and those in attendance, if it goes forward, where it goes from here?
Yeah, I'll defer to HR or Finance, I think they've been more actively involved with the conversations with Bolton, as I see HR, Monica, coming to the table. Because we have a concept right now, we still, as you said, we still have to develop out a specific plan.
Yeah, once, if, if we move forward with this, the next steps are gonna have to be reaching out to somebody who specializes in this, that can help us build the plan based on these initial parameters that we have. There are a lot of nuances to this that are not in Bolton's plan, and they're not being considered and talked about, haven't been yet openly, that Corinne and I have been working on and thinking about as far as, you know, eligibility and, and further defining the list of people who are on there, because again, nobody has actually asked HR who's on the list, like, so that I think there's where a lot of miscommunication and misinformation is, because what it says on Bolton's plan and what Corinne and I have physically talked to Bolton about a couple of weeks ago is not the impression that I think other employees have communicated based on their impression of what this is. So it, it's just nailing that down, finding out what those nuances are, finding out how it's gonna be, how it's gonna be executed, and, you know, just getting that communication out there too. But this plan is gonna take probably at least six or nine months. And then at that point, we both anticipate that the, the cost of running this is going to increase. I, I think Bolton's project, we, well, and I can't speak necessarily on the finance part of it, but our initial thoughts is that this number and this projection is much lower than what's gonna happen when we have actual data with the live census, when this plan tries to go into place with the actual individuals' positions in it.
So, this is a weird question perhaps, but knowing that we've been talking about this for, you know, let's just say five months, right? I know you said you, you talked with Bolton a couple of weeks ago about some of the parameters or things still yet to, to, to define. I know in their original plan that they gave us, they indicated kind of at the conclusion in the sentences there where it's talking about, look, this is based on the information that was given to us from the town, right? If there's anything in here that you want us to consider, please get it to us and we will rework the numbers, otherwise we're gonna assume everything is accurate and up to date, and a good picture of what our town employees are and what these potential beneficiaries could be. Did you ever communicate any of these concerns that have come up the last couple of weeks to Bolton in an effort to redefine or re, rework any part of it, let's say even initially in December and January when it first came out?
Well, I mean, we haven't because we were going on the, the original guidance with, which was coming up with a list of personnel that were in, physically, it, within the Public Works or the Police Department, that were in high physically demanding roles. And that was the original parameters that we sent to them. And when we confirmed with Bolton on the phone the other day, they said that those were the considerations that they took.
Right. I, I just, I'm having a hard time justifying, hey, this is gonna be way more expensive with, hey, we don't really know exactly a defined class of individuals, kind of a thing, you know what I mean?
More pieces to it, like I, like I said, I had done an analysis this morning, and I'm coming up with something different than Bolton. Also, you look at, like, those employees in positions that were in a qualifying position, say they were there for fifteen years and then they moved to a non-qualifying position. Well, Bolton's study was based on just the years that they worked in the qualifying position, not anything to do with their non-qualifying position. And that's, so that's one of the concerns, and then there's disability. What if the employee goes on disability and they get one amount from Maryland State Retirement, but not the full amount that would be the gap or the bridge? Are we gonna include that in there? And that could play a role in it. So there, we've been playing around with some scenarios, what, what if? And then what if that's how the plan's built compared to just the high-level bull points that Bolton did the study on, which is, here's the employees, these are the open positions of the employees. We, this is the pay point, I believe we gave them the pay point study, the projection of what it's gonna be, which can vary, so. And then when I go do my analysis, I'm kind of, I'm getting worried in 2032, and then very worried when we get to 2038. But again, that could change depending on the circumstances and what happens. And that's, I guess, my biggest concern is we have a, we're gonna have a pension that we are now obligated to pay, and that we need to make sure that we fund, and if we don't have the funds, are we gonna raise taxes, are we gonna cut benefits? And maybe that is because right now, if you look at the benefits, I mean, you wanna compare us to Charles County, they have to pay a portion of their health insurance, you look at a family plan, that's six hundred dollars a month. And we don't charge employees anything. So we might have to start looking at those type of changes, and then that affects those employees that aren't getting any benefits. So there's a lot of things in here that is really mixing this up and making it very difficult.
And yet, you want me to consider that in 2038, you can project with some level of certainty or foreseeability?
Just based on the information I have now.
Okay, which, you did an analysis this morning.
No, I, I did, when I was going through, I figured I'd analyze that and just see where we would be at. And I took the listing that we gave Bolton, the positions that were unfilled, projected out, okay, this is when the employee starts, this is their age, with the parameters of Plan Three, and then I also looked at, well, are we gonna hire new employees? I'm gonna assume they're gonna work, and this again is all something. The planning, I mean, it could be shorter, it could be longer. It depends on what happens, but you still have to project, or is the town gonna be prepared? If this is the scenario that happens, is the town gonna be prepared to be able to continue paying out these obligations? And that is part of the reason why. And that is part of the reason why I've been advocating for the defined pension, or not the, but the defined contribution plan is because, all right, let's give them those police officers and public works 6%. Well, we know what the cost is going to be. And in the future, they can determine on how they want to invest and it will depend on the employee's age. There's, there's a lot of parameters where the town is, already provides a pension, one benefit. Do we, and we can provide additional benefits in a different format to help employees. And again, I'm, I'm looking this on a financial standpoint. I'm looking at, okay, can the town pay for this? If the town can't, will, what will we have to do?
So this tax increase is based on your recommendation to cover what was given to you through the Bolton plan?
Yes.
Right? And now you're saying in 2038 or sooner, it may not be sufficient. Where was this analysis?
I, sorry, I.
A month ago, where was it? Within the month of the Bolton study?
The, the decision for doing this extra analysis probably, it came from me because as I was coming up with like these scenarios and how would we, how would we manage this situation and that situation? At some point I said, you know, is there, do we, because we know that this is an expensive plan. And I'm like, at what point does, when we're talking fiscal responsibility, I was like, when does that run out? And that's what started and triggered this, well, we need to know when that, when, when the money would run out potentially.
And, and we had multitude of plans given by the Bolton study to accomplish a couple of different things that were the will of the council at the time, right? Which was trying to figure out a way to get around the rule of 90 for our officers, which is uncommon in the state, uncommon nationwide to require for officers to be subject to the things that they are on the road and cumulative effects of their workplace environment on, you know, not just inside building or otherwise. And there were someone council that wanted to include public works in it. So Bolton came back and gave us these, a number of different plans. And we know that the plan that was selected to move forward with last month was one of the least expensive out of the enhanced benefit plans, right? So, so again, like, I, I, I can understand Councilman Jenkins, Part Burne, if you will, and Councilman Winkler's statements here. But as I understand the, the question that is raised tonight is we've got a plan that is being proposed that will take six to nine months to implement and define, correct?
That's our, that's what I.
That is a hope or is that a reasonable degree of like your expertise probability? Is that more likely so than not?
That's based on what I know for the things that are going to have to be addressed in this plan.
Okay. And as it currently rests right now, we have an outline, okay, from Bolton based on the will of council, okay, to, to identify certain employees who would be eligible. And there may be other individuals as outlined that could be part of those classes within the next six to nine months as being created, correct?
Yes, but then now we're going, we're, we're starting to stray from the Bolton plan started and where we were presented in December. Because if what you're saying, they presented this Plan Three and then like, oh, but now we want to add this into this and take away this and make this person covered and not, now we are straying.
So why is it going to take six to nine months to figure it out?
Because to develop a plan, we have fiduciary responsibilities. We have to create and define the plan. We have to create a trust. We have to create a fiduciary committee. We have to follow certain investment rules that the treasurer has to follow. Because we can't put these in a, in a normal, in a certain risk plan, which I might be overstepping what the finance.
We have to pay it out. So we can't, we, it's not like an individual plan where a young person can go ahead and just invest in high risk and recover. We're going to be paying these out within a year, 2026. There will be qualified employees to get the benefits.
And we'll likely have to do another actuarial somewhere in there. We're going to have to consider and find out how we have to do additional audits on this money. Because again, it's not, this is not in our scope of control. This, we, we have to hand this control over to another, basically another agency to manage. And to find, it's going to take time to find those people to, we're going to have to come to the council to make sure we can pay for those people if they're outside of what we've projected in the budget. And then when we get closer to the end of this plan, yeah, it's, it's defining, you know, what, how often, what do we do? And there's a whole bunch of laws that just recently changed in regards to retirement plans, the Secure 2.0 Act. So again, we have to make sure that we're not running afoul of any of those and making sure that we're within the new regulations about what can be contributed, what has to be paid. You know, there's, there's options in there about like, do we take into consider people's age for, you know, what they're eligible for? And in this plan, you know, we grandfathered some people in, but it was based on if they would have been eligible invested at the time, not whether they've got time now. So if there's somebody that was eligible, you know, and is now in a position that is not covered because they got promoted into a management position, which is not part of the study. Their salaries are different. And if the will of the council now is to say, well, we're just going to count those years of service and salaries too, that is going to exponentially increase our costs. And again, this is what this other person, these actuaries are going to have to take into account and come up with, with a more realistic number.
And we employ Bolton as part of that process or is their work essentially done with the study itself, Mr. Manuel?
There may be a better question. I think we probably wouldn't seek an outside.
Thank you.
So I have a question, and I have several questions actually in statements. It appears the consensus of the council is to have some type of benefit. If it's six to nine months, why couldn't we implement a, the contribution one for instant gratification, I guess, and do what you said? And give it to all employees, but maybe have a higher percentage to those high, the physical jobs there? And take a moment to really get into this. We're not saying no to this. I'm not saying no to this enhanced benefit here. But what's going on here is we're, I feel that there is a rush to get this through. And it's not, no, we don't have, and I'm not trying to insult you two, but you're not the experts to develop this plan. We've never done this before. And so for, for it to be six to nine months, and then what happens? The goalposts keep on changing on this. So it's going to be, could be more expensive. We may find a way to cut that. I don't know, but everyone's looking for value. And I value every single employee. As I've said in the past, my son's a police officer. My father was a police officer. I understand the job very, very well and I understand the risks. But there are others that have the high physical jobs too. So where I would like to see this go is I would like to really see this 457. And it was one of Bolton's first ones that came through because we talked about it. And we were talking about the matching and, and the different tiers. And I even shared a story where one town goes up to 15%, which is incredible. But that is something that I would like to consider with the budget and not see this one go forward where we really are willy-nilly on this. It's, we don't know what to expect. We have numbers, kind of, sort of, but six to nine months, what happens in six to nine months? What happens if it takes a year? It falls on a new council. Will we all be sitting up here? Who knows? You know, and does that new council say, yeah, we're going to do that? Or do they change it? And then we have lost a year where our employees could be contributing, they should be contributing now, but they could get an enhanced contribution benefit by have a matching on that. You know, last, last week, we had a very well-attended public hearing. We heard from a lot of people, businesses, employees. It is our job as council, we were elected to speak for the people. We have 11,000 bosses. And I, I did not take this lightly. I was on, granted, I was on vacation, but I really listened to everything everybody said, took notes. I heard from, you know, one of our Assistant Director of Operations, Kurt, who might benefit from this. He said some of his employees would actually, it would actually hurt them. And they are the ones that should be getting this. We heard from Ms. Lewis, who is on a fixed income. And she said that she feels like she's being discarded and seniors are being overlooked. I spoke with someone and I heard Councilman Winkler say that we went to the Washington Square Italian Dinner, which was fabulous. And one of the residents there said they got a notification from their mortgage company that their mortgage, because of the 31% increase in assessment, is going up $145 a month. And they're on a fixed income. The COLA is 3.2% for retirees. But the cost of, but the increase in the CPI is 3.4. So they're not making, they're not getting a raise. It's actually going to cost them more to get their groceries, their utilities, their food. We're not taking that into consideration. How about the underserved population? This increase is going to be on their backs as well. And many, I would assume, are, are struggling just as we are. You know, with the average house assessment up 31%, plus our town fees increase, it's not a tax, they're fees. Plus the 3% increase, you're looking at a lot of financial burden for all of our employee, or all of our residents. And yes, it will impact me. Will it though? You know, I, I, I will pay the same as everyone else, but I won't feel it as much as someone that is struggling to make ends meet. Our own treasurer is saying, this isn't a good budget. This is one that a contribution would be a better pension to that. So this isn't the year to do this. And I know council, you know, we can have differences of opinion and we still can hug in the end and say, I've heard you. But this isn't the year to do this. I would love to see the 457 done immediately. And then take a beat and really work this out instead of, well, maybe it'll happen. Because we don't know what will happen. What happens if, as Councilman Jenkins said, it kicks down the road, kicks down the road? What if this is kicked down the road again? Then you've got nothing. And then the next council will decide. And I don't think that's fair to everyone there. So I would really recommend we reevaluate this in the fall, but implement a matching 457. That's fair to everyone. So those are my comments. If you want to say anything about them, I'd appreciate some feedback.
Well, I, I believe one of the things that Corinne and I had worked up and presented was a 457 that took into consideration what you said, Madam Mayor, that we could offer all employees a 2% match. And then these targeted employees, 4% or 5% or whatever, you know, number we plan. But that is something that we have considered as an option. And again, it's, it's something the town can control. So if we can flex it up and down, if we think it should be more or less. And then based on revenue or based on taxes or based on economy concerns in general, like we have that, we have that capability and it's much easier for her to project year over year, what do we need and where can we do it? And to address the COLA and as you said, Assistant Director Kirk's comments about a negative impact. We did reduce the COLA this year outside of what we normally calculate and based on what is recommendate, recommended based on what we have been traditionally doing. So even without this pension in place, we have already negatively impacted the employees because some of that extra percentage of the COLA is going towards this pension budget as well. Which again, goes back to what can we fiscal manage? And if the council said that they didn't want to negatively, trying to bring this extra benefit, well, that's already happening.
One that bothers me the most, I think, and especially, and I'm going to speak because of my kids are in the younger generation and they are always searching for the next paying job, better paying job. We're going to implement this and they have to stay in place for 10 years.
In, in a covered position for 10 years.
Yes, in 10 years. If they're a fast burner, which we've got some amazing employees that go up the ranks. If they go nine years and 364 days and they get promoted, they are not 100% vested. They get zero. But with a 457, they will always have that, that could follow them. And that's concerning to me is that they're, they may be held hostage. What if they don't want to stay here because they have a better job? Or they have, their, their family moves or whatever it is. They get nothing if they're less than 10 years and not vested. I don't like that. And I think that's a disservice to our, our employees. All right, with that, any last comments?
Two points, because you just mentioned something and I will, and I will share this, that I spoke with somebody in the Charles County Sheriff's Department that I've, whose, whose opinion and knowledge and, and thought process is, I think is above reproach and, and whose I, I value tremendously. And in kind of seeking some of his counsel, he alluded to me that they, that while the Charles County Sheriff's Department has at one time the best pension in the state that other municipalities, and I, I just, for, for the record, I pointed that out into a letter that I submitted to the rest of the council. It was modeled by other municipalities because of the, the influx of deputies moving to the state police and going back and forth. But even he acknowledged to, just to what you said, is that they are having to redefine how they recruit and retain deputies because of the, no one is sticking around beyond seven years. And, and it kind of shocked me. He said, yet now they've had to change their entire recruitment process in an effort to figure out. Because most people are working for five, six, seven years and then they're moving on to the next thing. And I think that, you know, it, it might be not, not hokey, that's not the word, but, but I, I, I hadn't thought about it until the mayor brought it up, that you're asking somebody to stick around for, for a significant amount of time. And the likelihood of that is every day is getting less and less because of the upward mobility and just the natural evolution of, of people today. On a final note, I will also point out that I reached out to a municipality and, and I'm still very much hung up on this combining public works and public safety. It's never been done in the history of municipalities in the United States. And I, I don't think that we should be the, the standard bearer of that. But a municipality, I'm not unlike La Plata, experiencing tremendous growth, but still maintaining that small town charm and atmosphere. They got rid of their police department about eight years ago because they could no longer afford to keep up with what they had promised to those officers. They could not maintain what they had promised. I would hate to think that we would get to a position, and it's not a doom and gloom scenario. But I think that at some point, you can only give so much before you can't. You can only squeeze something so hard. And I think that, you know, that's a very real, and, and as Councilman Jenkins pointed out, our tax base is not growing as fast as the, the needs that we have for, to, to provide the services that we have. So if we're going to continue to provide the services at a level that we've all come to, to expect, and I, I picked up this term years ago and I don't know who to give credit to it, but it's called the democratization of luxury. And we've all mastered it, that we all want to have the very, very best. We all want to eat filet mignon and shrimp every night for dinner. And that's just not real. And, and I think that, you know, we, we all, I, I can sit here and say, I would absolutely swear that I, that the 457, that the expanded COLA, the expanded contribution for, for the public works and the public and, and the police officers is the very best for, for them in the current environment. I, I think combining the pension is the two, I, I think that we are, it, it's, it's just a, an opportunity, or I shouldn't say an opportunity, it's just a recipe for having a much sterner conversation in years to come where if, if we're all still here, that the, the, the consequences are going to be much, much greater. So I, 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 I think I've shared enough.
Thank you very much. Any other further comments?
Yeah, I have a question. Based on Madam Mayor's request, she asked or requested, I guess, for instant gratification purposes to, let's all go to 457 and then take another look in the fall as to whether or not to employ an enhanced benefits plan at that point. Is that a feasible option to put everybody in a plan and then try to take everybody out of a plan? Or take parts of people out of a plan again in, in essentially four months? Is that something we, we should be thinking about?
Well, 50% of the staff are already in the plan.
Are eligible or?
Already in the 457, they're already contributing themselves.
Right.
And this is not a plan where you have to take people in or out, it's just the whether it's being contributed to or not. So it's, if we had an enhanced pension and something happened and we had to stop that, there is a whole legal tangle mess of trying to undo that. But with the 457, you, you can choose to participate or not, you can enroll and elect or not, and there's nothing to unravel with that. It's either you're putting money in or you're not putting money in.
We only have 50% of our folks in the 457 as it is?
And that's them putting their own choice and their own money with no help from the town. So there's no incentive for people to, to participate in their own retirement on their own.
Okay, so that would be different. What, respectfully, you were not advocating everybody keep the same thing that we already have. You want an increased 457 until we figure out an enhanced benefit, right? That, that's, so with 50%, okay. Okay, so you say, and I, I heard from you from HR, but from fiscally and the financial hoops or boundaries you have to go, what does that task look like?
Enrolling employees and doing a match is very easy. It's the financial impact that I'm worried about because now we don't have that in the budget. And even if we take six months or nine months to do this plan and you guys decide, okay, let's do it, are we going to date it as of July 1st? Are we going to date it that in the middle of the fiscal year? I think it.
More clarity than?
It makes, it makes it more complicated, either go with one or the other. And again, like I've, I'm looking at this on a financial standpoint. If the employee actually is engaged in their retirement, the town's matching, saying that they do 6% match, the employee has an opportunity to choose to use those funds to supplement their income or bridge. It's up to the employee, but then the employee could choose to leave, go work somewhere else and continue having those funds grow. I'm not looking at, I don't want to recommend on the employee end, I'm looking at the fiscal portion and the, what the risk that the town has to endure with the pension plan compared to what the risk is with the 457, where there is very little risk because we would put in the amount that we can afford in the beginning of each budget.
Right, not to say that Madam Mayor was suggesting a bad suggestion, it's just not the path that you've been asked to walk along to forecast, essentially going one and then going another later. Fair, okay. I mean, I, I, I appreciate the comments. I'll just, just offer a slight rebuttal. Councilman Winkler's discretionary tale of, of a municipality closing their department because they could no longer fulfill the promises that they had made to their, their officers. You know, I cited a Washington Post article two weeks ago about many other departments across country that are shutting down, not voluntarily making decisions based on that. It's because of recruitment problems for bringing officers in, they were not competitive. And so they were trying to make buy by getting by with other municipalities and having MOU with counties and everything else. But that does, look, that's a, that's a decision. That's a decision that towns and, and cities can make if they don't want a police department. For me, as I look at this and staying competitive with our area, and I think there is a benefit to having a town police department. And I think that it increases the services of, of our residents, the ability to do what they want to do in town, which is live, raise their family, but conduct their business without fear. We've seen Charles County change a lot over the years with an increase in crime. And I think to look at the potential of not staying competitive and keeping a rule of 90 long-term, that's not beneficial for the town, our current residents or future in assessing the risk. And that's not, that's, maybe that's an intangible thing that isn't part of the analysis fiscally or with HR, and that's okay. We're, as counsel, we're asked to, as Madam Mayor stated, consider the larger questions, the resident questions as well. And so when we look at this, we look at quality of life for our residents, not just, you know, as, you know, somebody stated last week, if someone has a million dollar home, it's going to increase $300 annually. You know, that's $25 a month. Think proportionally speaking, I think having a police department that is getting the best candidates and keeping the best candidates for 10 years plus inherently enhances our culture with the town, enhances our community relationships and enhances our ability to provide services to our residents. So I appreciate the analysis. I know, look, some of this is art, some of it's science, but thank you.
The big concern is tonight, we are going to vote on a budget based on a concept. It's a concept. It's an enhanced benefit for the pension, but it's a concept. Subject to change, could go up, it could go down. But again, that is something I am very uncomfortable with. Because there's no concrete, there's not a solid plan in place.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm going to differ. We're not voting on a plan or an increase in taxes for the plan. We're voting on it because of what you stated in your analysis. The, our costs have gone up year over year. Prior, three years prior, costs have gone up, continue to go up. So it has nothing to do with the plan. It has to do with the fact that we do not have a balanced budget. The budget is balanced using unassigned funds. And that, and the only other way to get revenue in the general fund is to increase taxes. It has nothing to do with the entire, the retirement plan at all. It has to do with the fact that we continue to see the cost, we continue to ask department heads to cut staffing, cut resources, you know. I, I think constantly about Director Stahl coming to us saying, I'm back with my hat in my hands because I have to ask again for something. We don't, we won't have the benefit of opera funds continuously, you've stated that repeatedly. So we don't have any other option for revenue other than our taxes and the general fund. We do have the rate funds and the enterprise fund, we got that. But it does not cover the shortfall in the operations budget, which is the general fund. So again, this is, has nothing to do with a retirement plan, the enhanced benefit plan for the police officers. This is a conversation that has been seven plus years in the making. That's one thing. But the bigger picture is the cost to the town, the additional homes, not what's projected, what we've already had, two, almost 2,000 homes in a 20-year period, that when we've not had an increase. And so I, I, I want to make sure we're clear that that is not it. That's the, that's what's been put out there, that is not the fact. It has nothing, even if we didn't have this retirement plan in here, we would still have the increased cost, contractual services going up because we don't have the staff to cover it. We have a huge 48% in contractual cost already because we don't have the staff to cover it. So it has nothing to do with this. It has to do with the cost to maintain this town.
Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, just real quick, I, you did answer a, a question I had about close to 50% participate in the 457. So I, 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 again, I think the discussion certainly for me highlights, and I agree, we are being rushed and forced into a decision, but only because of a couple of factors, one of which is from my perspective, again, I, I just think that we've, we've been parsed information since January and I know it changes, but I just feel like, for me anyway, the information has been dribs and drabs, it's been in different formats, it's like it's been parsed. And so, but I understand the complexity, I, I get it. In fact, I believe I may have asked a couple of weeks ago, well, why would, assuming we do some kind of a budget, why can't we come back during the year and look at the pension plan? And I got a very incredulous look, like, really? Well, that's kind of what we're asking here, I, I mean, so. And then finally, you know, and this is, I can't change it, but hopefully going forward, again, I asked, why couldn't we have work sessions or one or as many as we needed? Where we talked to the department heads, okay, and, and get input from them? We didn't do that, okay? And so that, that troubles me. And so I hope in future years that we are able to do that. And I, I am going to be, after we get through this, maybe sometime tonight or tomorrow, whatever, I am going to, I am preparing a, what they call in the Army, an after-action review, where I'm going to critique the budget process and it's not personal, it's strictly going to say, here's an issue, here are recommendations, because I believe it has been a very flawed process with the understanding that it's very complex, I get that. So, and then that, so I appreciate the opportunity to comment.
And I agree, this has been a tough budget. But you know what? We're all learning on this and I think next year it will be a lot smoother. And we will give our input on what worked for us and what didn't. And I loved how you really tried to include a council on every step. Don't do that. Let the town manager have that and bring a balanced budget to us as, as we did. And, and next year will be different. The, the big thing that we have discussed, and it really hasn't, it's been insinuated, is expenses, cutting expenses. And that it was cut because someone, something wasn't asked. When I'm cutting a budget, it's not that I am asking for something and I didn't ask for it, so I cut it. It's what did I cut? And, and I know personnel is the big thing, but if you're going to cut something, it's going to be benefits. It's going to be, as you mentioned, the health benefits. That's where the cuts come in, not asking for something else. My husband wouldn't agree with that at all. And so that's how you have to balance it that way. So you have given us a lot of information and I thank you very much for all of your hard work. This has been a very difficult budget season and it has, it will have an impact on our town. Positively, negatively, it will impact our town on that. I am concerned about all of our employees. So Mr. Manuel, I see that you have, oh, one last thing before I say something. I'll give it to you. When we decided as a council to bring everyone up to the 65th percentile and we used ARPA funding, at that point, it should have been discussed, we can't afford, it's either this or that, we can't afford a enhanced budget, enhanced pension plan. All right, Mr. Manuel.
Yes, I once wanted to clarify that the ordinance 2407, the fiscal plan, will be for introduction tonight, so there will not be a vote on that.
Very good. Based on this, based on this conversation that we've had and all of the information that we have been given, I would like to keep the public record open until the 28th of May. That will allow anybody that didn't come down here, anybody that is sitting out there and heard things that they might want to agree with, disagree, suggestions on, I, I feel that we owe this to our public on that. So I am putting, I'm making a motion to keep the, and I just need a consensus or a yes or a no to keep the record open until 28th May. Do I have a, yes?
Well, I just have an, an observation and a comment about that. Again, I'm not, I have a lot of mixed feelings about keeping the record open. However, having said that, over a year ago, twice I asked, could we keep the record open for, for the two annexations? And I was basically told, no, you can't do that. So I'm just kind of perplexed, why, why now that we're, again, it's, it's for a good reason, but I don't understand frankly why this is any different than something else. I, in principle, I agree, we should keep it open, but when, when asked a year ago, it was, the answer was no. And I should have been quicker on my feet to ask, well, why not? So now we're, now we're going to do it, maybe for the right reason, but I just have to voice my, my concern about the contradiction here, that's all.
And I, I, I recognize that. It's just a suggestion that I would like to keep the record open until 28th May so employees could, or residents could chime in on new information that they have learned today and move forward with that. Councilman Winkler, yes or no?
Would be, I would be in favor of leaving it open if it's the, the consensus. I, I, I think at some point, though, we have to draw a line in the sand and just say, you know, it's been open, it's been open for a couple of weeks, it's been, no matter how long you leave it open, there's always going to be a reason to leave it open another week to allow somebody who missed the window. And at some point you have to say, we gave until this particular date and if you missed it, you missed it. Sometimes the line, you know, sometimes the gate closes and you miss the opportunity. So I, that is extremely vague and I, I don't see the harm and I, I, I'm kind of like Councilman Jenkins, I don't see the harm in leaving it open, but why?
Yes, yeah, that's fine.
No, we have to pass the budget, we have to get a budget. It is, it is May 21st. The budget has to be passed by the end of June to be effective June 1st. I'm not in favor of keeping it open.
Okay.
So we, we tried to do that last week, but in essence, the record has been open because we've had two public hearings.
Two different things.
Well, in the public's mind, they're the same thing. I mean, in my view, it's the same thing. So grudgingly, I would, under protest or with a negative comment, I will agree to keep the record open. But I still think it's contradictory what we did a year ago and now all of a sudden we're going to do it. I don't agree with that.
Thank you very much. So the record will, by consensus, stay open until, until 28th May. We can have people write in on their comments and hopefully we get some feedback on that. So with that, this conclude, if I don't have any further comments? All right, so we will not go forward with legislation this evening, is that correct? If we're keeping the record open?
It's an introduction, so the record would need to be closed before you made a decision, which would be next week.
Okay, so we will not do an introduction until?
We will do an introduction tonight, but the record will need to be closed prior to you have, holding the second reading in consideration of adoption.
All right, so you need a consensus to proceed with the legislation to move forward for introduction tonight, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Hold on, this is a consent adjustment, you're moving the budget forward?
Yeah.
What's for introduction, the ordinance, introduction of the ordinance?
To move, yes.
And Councilman Challenger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I'm a no. All right, so with that, I will move to close this first public hearing at 7:30. Yeah. All right. Stay tuned because there's part two coming up. All right, we have our fee schedule. So thank you for joining us. I'd like to officially open the public hearing for the fee schedule scheduled at seven thirty. And the procedures will be the same as the last public hearing. Madam Clerk, has the notice of public hearing been properly advertised?
Yes, Mayor. For the record, the public hearing was advertised in the Southern Maryland News in the May tenth, twenty twenty four issue. A copy of the advertisement is attached to the meeting agenda. Notice of this public hearing hearing was also advertised in the town's webpage.
Thank you so much. Will the town manager and the town treasurer please provide comments on behalf of the staff regarding the FY twenty five fee schedule?
The fee schedule is being presented the same as it was last week. There was no changes. Unless you guys have additional questions regarding the fee schedule?
Are there any questions from council?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Again, thanks for the information. Again, just to clarify for the public, th- these are for the fees that we charge people to use things. And so, and for instance, and this is probably the enterprise fund, for instance, the we're going to raise those fees, taking like for sanitation for trash. And the reason is because the county raised the landfill, what by what percentage did the county raise that? So we got to pay that for in order for citizens to have. Okay, I just want that people to understand that we we don't have a whole lot of control on some of these fees and the costs that are associated with them. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from council? Hi, Madam Clerk, have you received any additional written statements for the record?
No, Madam Mayor, no correspondence specific to the fee schedule has been received.
All right, and I have a list that no one signed up for for public comment on to speak on this subject, but I will open up the floor. Anybody? All right. Any additional questions by council? And Mr. Manuel, Ms. LaDuston, do you have anything else to add?
Do not.
Thank you very much. Then this concludes the public hearing on FY twenty five tax rates. And the town council, unless there's a reason that you want to hold openness record to. We'll hear no further comments or questions regarding this time. Do I have a consensus to move to proceed to close? It's going to be a tour to close this public hearing. Do I have a consensus?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Challenger, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
I agree as well. And do I have a consensus from council to proceed with legislation on the fiscal year FY twenty five fee schedule? Councilman Winkler?
Yes.
Councilman Challenger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yeah.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
All right, this concludes this public hearing at seven thirty three P M. All right, thank you very much. Moving on with our agenda. Next on the agenda will be oh, my goodness, if I can even find where we are right now. We are approval of minutes. Here we go. Approval of minutes in public hearing on May fourteenth. Council, do if you've had an opportunity to look at that, do I have a motion to accept May fourteenth minutes as presented?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of May fourteen, twenty twenty four as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, please indicate by. Oh, any comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak on anything? All right. And we don't and and she left. All right. We had one person sign up, but I think she has left right now, so we will go on to Cornerstone, come on down. And just please press the mic so it's on. Welcome. Thank you so much for coming down here. For the record, would you please state your name and then give us your report?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I'm Council Bernie Marzick from Cornerstone Government Affairs. I'll let Stu's.
Wait, with the Christopher Duse.
Push the button. It's very.
There we go.
All right.
Christopher Duse with the Cornerstone Government Affairs Team, supporting Bernie.
Thank you.
Sorry, Bernie Marzick from Cornerstone Government Affairs in Annapolis. The red light means it's on. I apologize for that. Good evening to you all. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I wanted to provide an update from the legislative session, from the work that our team has done on behalf of the town. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to represent the town in Annapolis and across the state with different state agencies. And I've been with Cornerstone now for five and a half years. I've spent my previous role in local government in Anarunel County. And Mac Middleton, Senator Milton was the prior lead. As you know, Senator Milton has retired from government affairs work, still active on the farm, obviously, but Chris Duse, Tiffany Harvey, and myself are now the leads for the town along with our entire team. Mr. Manuel, I believe provided you with our report where you can see our entire team who is at your disposal in Annapolis and across the state. On the legislative side, there's a lot of details in the report about kind of the focus. Again, the budget was a primary focus as it is every year in Annapolis. But for the town's purposes, the mayor, along with Meryl Municipal League was very successful with the tourism zone legislation. She was very fortunate to be there for the bill signing with Chris a couple of weeks ago with Governor Moore. So obviously, a huge success there on the legislative side. We were able to kind of navigate that process as it went through this year. Sometimes things go faster, sometimes a little bit slower. Our primary focus was on the budget for the town and the capital budget and the different projects that have been identified as priorities. This work began well before session with our efforts with the governor in reaching out to him as he developed his budget for the twenty twenty four legislative session, which is the fiscal year twenty five budget. Outlying our priority of the community center, Governor Moore, we were very fortunate to Governor Moore did introduce his capital budget with five hundred thousand dollars for the new Phoenix Run Community Center. We then moved into session to try to maintain those funds in there, which were successful, which is fantastic news for the town. We also worked with the before session, the leadership of the Senate Budget and Taxation Committee and the House Appropriations Committee to lobby on behalf of the town's priorities with the focus being on the police station. We were successful in obtaining a hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward the new police station. The mayor and Brent were able to kind of communicate with the those leaders in our meetings that we had with them before session, during session, and all through session up until the end when the budget was finalized, very near the end of session, as the report outlines to you. I would encourage the the town to send a thank you letter to Governor Moore to the leadership of the House Appropriations and Senate Budget and Taxation Committee. I always think it's good to have that follow up. We made the request. They were very receptive to us and included that money in the budget this year. So all in all, a great year, a very successful year. Again, on behalf of our entire team, we are very grateful for the opportunity to represent the town. And Chris and I'd be happy to answer any questions you all have.
Do you know how much money you have secured for us in the last two and a half years or three years you've been with us?
I don't know off the top of my head. I could get that to you in about fifteen minutes, but I believe last year we were at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if I'm correct. I think it's five hundred thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And in the prior year, you're testing me.
But I am talking about the eleven point two million dollars that you got that you were instrumental in getting for the Charles Street renovation. It has, and I thought that it has exceeded fourteen million dollars.
All in all.
In all.
Yes.
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 And that's very impressive.
Yes.
So thank you for that.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, thank you for the hard work on that. I know that Mac was instrumental in getting all those funds with you all too, so that's quite impressive. So thank you for that. Council, any questions for CGA?
Thank you. And again, thank you for your work. I used to go up there quite a bit in my prior career, so I know the work you're going to do that particularly during this time, those challenging times. Couple of questions. So it's five hundred thousand for the new Phoenix Run. I I not your problem or issue, but again, I would renew my request to have them come talk to us about an update. Because again, they have a they're getting a lot of money, and I'm sure it's great and all that, but I sort of would like to see some kind of a plan or accountability, what that's going to be used for. You referenced the tourism bill, I think two House and Senate bill. So I read those as well, and it's a good deal, but what does that actually mean for the town of La Plata? Because we don't have a Main Street program, and we don't have a tourism designation, and we don't have a state Arts and Entertainment District, even though we attempted to do that a number of years. I'm just curious what that would mean for us. Maybe 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 Brent can.
It's more of a local question as opposed to
Right.
Cornerstone. You know, we're still evaluating that. We could identify specific industries, if you will, that may be of benefit to the town if we wanted to go out and actively recruit specific industries. We could provide tax rebates if they met specific employment triggers. So, you know, we don't have an ordinance, so it's hard for me to speculate what we could do, but it's sort of a very wide open at this point. And so it would be something that we will undertake, obviously, at least a conversation to see if, one, if we want to pursue a specific ordinance on which is now enabled in Maryland. So yeah, it's something I worked with in in Virginia. We were able to get a tourism, but we were a tourism destination. So a little bit different. I don't think a lot of people think of, you know, La Plata as a tourist destination yet. But we do have, you know, quite a few historic structures and in around town.
And we are Maryland's first bird city.
Again, I mean, I would, again, I think on paper, or it's it's a good thing because I know it's been very successful in Virginia because I read past issues about it. Again, and you answered my some of my questions is, so I would hope that the town actively pursues some mechanism to leverage this bill to our advantage. That gets back to the previous comment about diversifying our tax base. But again, I I'm struggling to understand how we're going to do that if we don't have any economic development function in our current organizational structure. We've made little, and that's my fault, little to no progress on La Plata Downtown Center Corporation. And we attempted several years ago to work with the state to do an Arts and Entertainment District. And for some reason, I'm not fully aware of what the precise reason, we never pursued that. So I just, again, want to reemphasize us that take to leverage that and to pursue that and be very aggressive in trying to pursue that for our for the benefit of our taxpayers. Thank you. Thanks again.
I would say that would be a very good topic for our future work session that you mentioned previously. And I will just let council know that that will be coming up on next week's agenda will be the prioritized prioritization of some of the tasks that you guys have brought up. So we can sort of formulate a work plan moving forward into FY twenty five.
If I could just add as well, I think there's an opportunity through the Maryland Municipal League where I know the mayor was very active this year, testifying for these bills and working with M M L where other municipalities will take advantage of this legislation as well, and you'll be able to learn from some of their lessons learned. I think there's a good opportunity there from a statewide perspective. Obviously, on a local level, you'll need legislation to enable this.
That's a great a great point, and and I will put this in one of my future podcasts. I had the occasion to be in Berlin, Maryland over the weekend, and their farmer's market had pictures and video. They closed down their Main Street in in Berlin, Maryland, which is half our size. And it was incredible what they're doing in Berlin. So I again, to me, you're you're right on the money. That is best practices that hopefully we can leverage to our benefit as well. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for CGA?
Yes. Hey, thank you for coming and presenting. Thank you for your advocacy, and it's nice to meet you both. I know it's big shoes to fill, but we appreciate your advocacy. I know just in being a trial attorney and and being part of Maryland Association for Justice, a lot of what our lobbyists do often is kill bad bills. Were there any bills that you saw that would have been detrimental to the town or municipalities as a whole that you identified that you were able to kind of work work towards putting that to the side at all?
I don't think there were any specific to the towns that we were involved in. I'd have to go. I can get back and check and and double check on that, but on our list, the bills that we had tracked were you know, very specific to La Plata, not necessarily towns generally. I could talk with the folks at M M L and see kind of what other priorities were introduced that were ultimately didn't pass.
Two other questions. Do you do you guys represent any counties in Maryland as well as municipalities?
We do. We represent Prince George's County. We represent Queen Anne's County as well.
Okay. I know sometimes county goals are different than municipality goals as far as trying to get hands on the budget, but Prince George's and La Plata may not have an overlap there. My other question is, obviously, this is timely. When's the next time that we hear from you guys as far as any update or brainstorming goals or ideas for next time around?
Happy to talk to you tomorrow. We meet regularly, and I'm happy to have any input on any of the priorities. Obviously, we will work with you all on whatever the priorities are for the town. I know we've got a lot in the in the works now where we're working. We just had a call last week with Department of Natural Resources, still working with Department of Environment, other transportation priorities that we have on our list. But if there are specific items, either legislatively or budgetarily, you want to have conversation, happy to have those conversations because I it's never too early to start. I think to try to build support from the District Twenty Eight team from the governor's office, as well as from the leaders in the Appropriations Committee, because outside of our official business, we're at fundraisers, you know, where we have these conversations. Senator Zucker's got an event coming up that we'll be at, right? He's a big supporter of the town. Extremely helpful. He's the chair of the Senate Budget and Tax Capital Budget Committee. It's a great time to have conversation with them informally, well in advance of session.
Right. Mr. Manuel, do you think we could come up with some kind of you know, prospective kind of scheduling as far as the town and and coming?
That was what I was going to provide you is that is also next week, we're going to talk about M M L has legislative priorities that they would like us to at least discuss and determine whether the town has anything we would like to move forward. I believe the deadline for that is June thirtieth, but then also we could maybe piggyback that on the next time Cornerstone, I think we're doing these every two months. So in August, September timeframe, maybe next time Cornerstone comes to give an update, but also we could maybe discuss some possibilities of legislative priorities from this council that we would like to see Cornerstone maybe pursue in the next legislative session. That way, as Bernie said, you know, it's never too soon. So the sooner we can sort of establish something and they can go to work for us, the better off we'll be.
Great. Thanks a lot.
And Mr. Manuel, unless they changed it, I think it was thirty one May is M M L L A R, so do.
All right, well, great. So we'll have it before, hopefully.
You got to work.
Thirty one day.
Three days.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for CGA?
I'm sorry, I I had one question that you may not be able to answer, but you mentioned, Mayor, this the Charles Street Route Six S H A study in the eleven million. It was cut originally back in, it was during the button. So was that fully restored or still cut in the in the M? was that fully restored or still cut i- in the, in the MDOT's, uh, consolidated transportation budget? It was, and I think they're coming up, they're going to have another public meeting shortly. I was just curious, it was cut, but I didn't know if it was restored or what kind of happened to that.
I think it was.
Do we know?
I don't think it was a large percentage that was cut. I believe it, uh, and I think I communicated what we anticipate this project costing is still within, uh, the scope of the monies that we still have with the state and, you know, I just talk of it like it's our money, it's the state's money.
Right.
Uh, but yeah, some of that money did go away to sort of help balance out other, uh, projects, but my estimation is that we will still have ample funds available to implement whatever planning exercise they come up with on Route Six.
Yeah, because knowing that it's a, a, a six-year program, so they, they're in the planning design phase and then they do their thing and they come back with design and actual construction. I think what, twenty twenty-eight is the end date of the current CTP?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming down here and, um, sitting through our public hearing. That was pretty fun. I, I bet you guys haven't done that.
We enjoyed it. It was a good time.
Yeah, I, I am sure you did. It was quite entertaining.
Happy to do it.
Thank you very much, and, and thank you for all the hard work you guys do. I really appreciate it.
My, my one last thing, Mayor James, I know we say this to you and Brent, if you all are ever in Annapolis and you need a place to set up shop, you're welcome at our office anytime. Um, we've got a great conference room and if you need to meet somebody or just need a cup of coffee, we're always there, so.
But the door is locked and Jenna has to let me in. I think that's the only time it was locked, right?
It's all good.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, uh, Director Harrington. It, you are up for the official street map revision. Safe travels, gentlemen. You can sit if you want.
That's okay. I've been sitting all day.
Okay.
Uh, so in accordance with chapter one seventy, uh, the town has updated the official street map. Uh, we did take into consideration the comments and concerns that were raised previously, and we did update the map to reflect the changes to the, um, a few of the roads that are within town to show them as private, county-owned or town-owned. Uh, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, any questions? All right, thank you, because I know there was a big controversy on one, um, and that, that was resolved, right?
To the best of our knowledge, yes.
Okay, good. Um, thank you for your hard work on that. That, uh, I know that was a lot of digging through, um, things, um, but it's good to see that it's an official map. And so we need to, um, move this to legislation, right? Do we have to vote on this one?
Correct.
Consensus, yes. Um, so I'm looking for a consensus to move this down to legislation. Councilman Winkler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traulinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
All right.
Again, Mayor James, this is also for introduction this evening.
For introduction, thank you very much. All right, and that brings us to the Brent Show, legislation.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Madam Mayor, Town Council, uh, first item, ordinance twenty-four dash zero five, Town of La Plata Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Tax Rate. Uh, this is for a second reading and for consideration of adoption, an ordinance concerning the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Tax Rate for the purpose of adopting the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Tax Rate and all matters generally relating thereto.
All right, I will entertain a motion. Madam Mayor? Yes. I move that we adopt ordinance twenty-four dash zero five, Town of La Plata Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Tax Rate. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, um, all in favor, please indicate, oh, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. So let's do a roll call. Uh, council, uh, uh, Madam Clerk, could you please do a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Winkler?
Nay.
Councilman Traulinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Mayor James?
Nay. Thank you. It'll pass, uh, three to two. All right, next, uh, Mr. Manuel.
Next, we have ordinance twenty-four dash zero six, Town of La Plata Fiscal Year. I'm sorry, am I reading the same thing? Uh, fee schedule, I beg your pardon, let me, as you were. Uh, ordinance twenty-four dash zero six, Town of La Plata Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Fee Schedule. This item is for first, first reading for introduction, an ordinance concerning Town of La Plata Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Fee Schedule for the purpose of adopting the fee schedule, dealing with fees set by the Town of La Plata for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five and all matters generally relating thereto.
Great, thank you, and next?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, ordinance twenty-four dash zero seven, Town of La Plata Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Financial Plan Budget. This item is for first reading, introduction, an ordinance concerning Town of La Plata Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Financial Plan Budget for the purpose of adopting the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Financial Plan Budget and all matters generally relating thereto.
All right, um, and then that brings us down to you.
Madam Mayor, Town Council?
Nice one, yes.
Yes, ordinance twenty-four dash zero three, Official Street Map. Also, this is for a first reading or introduction, an ordinance concerning Official Street Map for the purpose of amending the Official Street Map of the Town of La Plata, Maryland, and all matters generally relating thereto.
All right. So new business from Mayor and Town Council. We'll go with Councilman Winkler.
Uh, nothing to report from the Design Review Board or the, um, there is a, uh, plaque under review for Willing Helpers Hall. Um, designating them as a, as a town historic, uh, site, um, when that is the final approval of that comes up in the, I think in the next couple of weeks, or we should get, um, final wording from, um, Ms. Coggins, um, before putting that up on, uh, on the building. Um, on another note, I, I think it just, you hate to say, but, but I, I'm happy for, but, um, I just learned that Mimi's Dry Cleaning, after a tremendous longevity in the town, is retiring. Um, and, and I will say that from a personal note, it's something I sent, um, Grant over there to have a pair of pants hemmed for the senior prom, and it was, I, I, I had to give her a big hug because she has been there through my grandparents, my parents, myself, and now my kids. So my hat's off to Ms. Mimi, and I wish her well in her much deserved and much needed retirement.
Oh, well, that's sad news, but what a career.
What a career.
Um, Councilman Traulinger?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, beautification is not having our meeting on Memorial Day.
Oh.
So, I know, I know, there are some that are not as committed to the beautification of this town, unfortunately. But Director Phipps has graciously rescheduled our next meeting to be June twenty-fourth. Um, I will say, um, I was able to attend the AAPI event at Port Tobacco Players along with Councilwoman Evelyn Bryant Ward, and it was a tremendous, um, opening event, you know. Um, there was a lot of work put into the event, but it, it was excellent food, excellent, uh, performances with different dancing, different songs, um, but it really was a cool thing that I think will continue to grow year after year after year. And I know Ms. Phipps, uh, worked on that event a lot, and our community really came together, uh, packed out, even though it was raining, and we were kind of in a tent. Um, there was, uh, plenty of fun to be had, so, um, really cool that the town was able to host this opening event for the first hour, so.
And thank you for stepping in, and I got immediate feedback that they were, um, so appreciative that both you and Councilwoman Bryant Ward stayed for the whole um, event, and that was noted, so that was, yeah, thank you. Thank you for representing the town in such a great way.
And my six-year-old daughter stayed for the entire time and loved it.
Oh, that is so good. Oh, and what an experience for her to actually, uh, get to see. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
So I don't have anything, any updates from the Playing Commission, but if you have not gone to Port Tobacco Players, please do. They did an amazing job with the Raisin in the Sun, and I saw ragtime before, so certainly go and support them. Um, they are doing, I mean, just to think that we have something like that in our community, um, and it's done with such excellence. So if you, you know, look for something to do, certainly consider, um, going to their events.
Thank you for that plug, and the next one up is Wizard of Oz. There you go. Councilman Jenkins?
Uh, thank you. The Parks and Rec Recreation Commission will meet early, early in next month, so I'll have a report for them, but I just wanted to kind of circle back something Councilman Traulinger mentioned about, um, about partnering with other age counties in terms of budget issues and things. That's a very interesting observation. Uh, I've been to two conferences. One was on Smart Growth, twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-four Smart Growth Conference, and then early la- last week, the Eastern Shore Land Conservancy had a conference, online conference, and they had a fascinating presentation by a senior planner with the Frederick County Planning Department and the process they're going through with, with their comp plan. And I, and I actually, their current director is the former PGA Director here in Charles County, Deborah Carpenter. She's been there eight or nine months now. So I had a chance to talk with her. The point I want to make is that they have a very interesting and fascinating comp plan process. Because the thinking is now changing on that, because it takes so long to update them that Charles County is going to do next year. Took them five years to approve the last one. Uh, and, and, but more importantly, they've done sector plans. And then also as important, I think they have annual work programs based upon the comp plan goals and objectives. So I would urge us to kind of maybe think about that in the future to the planning directors, uh, uh, in, uh, direction and accomplishment, we do have on the web, her website, a, a tab that looks at how we're implementing the comp plan. So I think that that's something we also need to consider again in the future, but that comp plan process was fascinating, and I'm a recovering planner, so that's kind of second nature to me. So it, I'll probably share some information on that as well, and I'll be doing either a future podcast or video about that process as well. Thank you.
And you know, that sounds like a great, um, work session topic to, to cover too. So this Friday, it is happening. It is our opening day for our summer, uh, concert series, and we are opening with Girl Crush. Um, and sad to say, their lead singer, which has been a staple in, in La Plata forever, she is moving to Colorado. So this will be her final swan song for us, um, in our, in our, um, series there. But also, we will be laying a wreath for Memorial Day, so we need to remember that Memorial Day is on Monday, and I just have a little statement I'd like to say is this Memorial Day, we remember and honor the brave men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice in service to our country. Their courage, dedication, and love for their federal fellow citizens will never be forgotten. As we gather with family and friends, make sure we take a moment to reflect on their contributions and express our deepest gratitude. Their legacies, legacy lives on in the freedom we cherish today. So everyone, please have a safe Memorial Day weekend, but I hope that it is kicked off right here at Town Hall. It's free and it's going to be an amazing concert, and the weather's supposed to be perfect, so. Thank you so much. That concludes my report, and with that, I move to adjourn at eight oh four PM. Thank you all for a great meeting.